I'm not going to use this scab, but sure is fun to have. All right, I think we can go ahead and call the February meeting of the Town of Abingdon Planning Commission to order. We welcome you to the Town of Abingdon, Virginia Planning Commission Regular Meeting. Appreciate your interest and encourage public participation in our meeting. Your comments are important to our decision-making process. There'll be two opportunities to address the commission. One will come when we have a specific issue that comes before the commission. And the other opportunity is when we call for public comment. And public comment, when we call for that, would be public comment on something other than what is on the agenda. If you wish to comment, anyone should, who's going to address the commission, will approach the podium, give your first and last name, your complete physical address, and your comments should be limited to three minutes. Ms. Rice, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Pennington?
Here.
Mr. Weaver?
Here.
Mr. Anderson is absent. Mr. Sproles?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
And Mr. Schuman?
Here. All right, the next item on our agenda will be approval of the minutes from the regular meeting, January 24th. Has everybody had the opportunity to review those minutes?
Yes.
Is there any, are there any changes, additions to the, to the minutes as they've been presented? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Weaver, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Pennington, any addition, additional discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, like so?
Abstained, since it wasn't here.
Okay. The next order of business is a certificate of appropriateness. Town of Abingdon, 133 West Main Street, Abingdon, Virginia 24210. Owner, Kyle Pollard, representative. Certificate of appropriateness for entrance signed to the sports complex located at 78 Cook Street Avenue, Virginia 24210. Tax map D, parentheses, 105-a-39, in parentheses. First thing is staff report.
And then I'm going to have our new planner, Gabe, come up and give it.
Hello. So after reviewing the application, it was found that the certificate of appropriateness does match the covenants requirements and everything as such, and staff is recommending approval for the sign as such. And as you can see from the photos, it is located at the entrance, particularly right beyond the circle, the traffic circle, and it shows correctly where the entrance to the meadows would be, and matches all the requirements needed for such.
All right. Is there anybody here that wants to speak to this request?
I can't. If you all have any questions about the sign, I'm...
Would you identify yourself, please?
I'm Kyle Pollard. I'm the Assistant Director of the Recreation Department.
Okay.
And I submitted this, so if you all have any questions about the sign...
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Pollard?
My, my only question is, the location where you show it...
Yes, sir.
There's a, there's a, yeah, that one with the two red circles. So where the picture was taken from is an out parcel, and someday it will be something.
Right.
And if that sign goes right there, you won't be able to see the traffic coming. Like, it needs to be like, if you can imagine, you pull up in your car and looked to the right, you have a sign in the way, you won't be able to see the cars coming.
Right.
So it either needs to be pulled back from the road, or, or talk to the town engineer or something about...
Okay.
...sighting that correctly, otherwise you'll have a blind spot.
Okay.
Or that, it looks like it here, it looks like it'd be too close up to the...
I can have the town engineer come out and check.
Yeah, just make sure there's a sight distance there for any future entrance. And it may be the entrance for that parcel is far enough away from the sign that it's not an issue.
I think it is, but I'll have him come out and double check.
Yeah, just double check that.
Any other questions for, for Mr. Pollard?
Is the sign just one-sided?
Yes, sir.
Other questions or comments? Is there anybody else here that wants to speak to this request? All right. Okay, what's, what's the pleasure of the commission? Scott, do you want to take a motion that would take into account your concern?
Yeah, I would move that we approve the certificate of appropriateness for this sign as presented with the caveat that, that just the town engineer has consulted as to location and sight distance issues for the...
And he has been out there, but we'll double check it, just to...
Okay.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, any additional discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Second thing is certificate of appropriateness, gastroenterology associates, 329 Main Street Avenue, Virginia 24210. Owner, Lisa Walden Bristol Signs Company, LLC, Walden LLC, representative. Certificate of appropriateness for signage located at 329 Main Street Avenue, Virginia 24210. Tax map D, parentheses, 011-12-1, in parentheses.
Start with the staff.
All right, Gabriel Christopher, I'm town planner. So the sign will be constructed on already an existing wooden panel there, and as you can see, the Abingdon acupuncture sign's already there, so it's just going around underneath it. So it matched all the criteria, size and everything as such, so staff is recommending approval.
Any questions? Sir, did you want to address that?
Those are my reads, and I'll just stress it, it's exactly as it was before.
Okay.
Nothing changed.
Any additional discussion? Is there a motion from the commission?
I move that certificate of appropriateness be granted as presented.
Okay, Mr. Weaver, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any additional discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, thank you. The next order of business is a public hearing, and it deals with the zoning ordinance amendment. The public hearing will deal with the text amendment to add childcare to ordinance in B1 and B2. So I'm going to open the public hearing at this time, and we'll begin with staff report.
All right, Myanna Rice, Community Development Director. So the United Way of Virginia made this request to the Planning and Zoning Commission on January 24th, and asked them to allow for childcare facilities in the B2 zoning district. A little bit of background, as we all know, childcare has become one of those limiting factors as we're recovering from the pandemic. These types of facilities stretch beyond just a home daycare, and they're really focused on integrating the workplace and childcare in close proximity. B2 is what was initially asked. During the discussion at the previous meeting, there was also a request to initiate it in B1 as well, so that was added to the request. You can see the underline and strike through, which is just basically adding childcare facility into the permitted uses by right in B1 and B2. When we look at the findings required per the Code of Virginia 15 dot 2 dash 2283, staff has found that it does comply with the comprehensive plan. It does support, B1 and B2 already supports a wide range of uses, including schools, and so therefore childcare would have very little additional impact in that zoning district. The interpretation of the zoning regulation is that it identifies permitted uses and does not identify those not permitted, so we did specifically have to add it in. And the, the key leaders in the growth of childcare opportunities currently is the United Way, and there is a community need. The B1 and B2, allowing for childcare facilities will not alter orderly development. The B1 and B2 districts, there should be no adverse effects to the natural environment with a zone text amendment. That would come through a site plan review for a specific project. And finally, allowing for childcare facilities in these districts will continue to support that balance between residential and non-residential uses. So with that, staff is recommending approval, and we have a sample resolution provided that would have you send your recommendation to the Town of Abingdon Town Council.
So, so we would, we would approve the, that, okay.
Yes.
Is there anybody else who wants to talk to, speak in favor of the amendment, or the text amendment? Anyone who wants to speak in opposition to the text amendment? Okay. With that being said, I'm going to close the public hearing and open this for discussion with Planning Commission. Are there any questions for Ms. Rice, or any other discussion? Is there a motion to somebody to approve the text amendment?
I make a motion that we approve the text amendment to allow childcare within B1 and B2, and forward this to Town Council.
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Any additional discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, very good. The next item of business is a certificate of appropriateness. Doug Superwash Turnheart Acquisition Corporation, 2506 South Front Street, Richland, Virginia 24641. Owner, Jeremy Fields, Appalachian Design Services representative. Certificate of appropriateness for new construction of a car wash located at 140 Cook Street Avenue, Virginia 24210. Tax map D, parentheses, 105-a-39, in parentheses. Virginia 24210, tax map D, parentheses 021-8-9A, in parentheses. Staff report.
Okay, thank you, Myanna Rice, Community Development Director. As you indicated, this is a request for a certificate of approval for new commercial car wash. It's located at 140 Cook Street. It's in the general business district B2. That's within the entrance corridor, so for the public, items that are in the entrance corridor come through the Planning Commission for their approval. It is part of the Meadows planned unit development, so there are some guidelines that are identified in that document as well. So we'll just say a little bit about the property. It's 2.036 acres. The design, uses, entrance locations, and the final plat dictated many of the requirements of how this site plan was laid out. So in fact, we worked with the, we worked with the developer, they had brought in a different entrance location with the first design, and we asked that they come back and provide an entrance that matched the original underlying plat, of which they did provide that. They did provide landscaping. The landscaping is, can be found on sheet 6.0. The applicants indicated that because of their frontage and the requirement of 50% front yard landscaping, that's 648 square feet, and they provided 795 square feet of landscaping. There are some additional requirements specifically for automatic car washes, and vacuuming facilities that they have identified do meet those specific requirements for section 18-6-1. There are parking lot standards that are required, and the applicants have indicated they are providing one tree for five parking spaces as required. This is a total, or a total of two additional parking lot trees for the 10 parking spaces proposed. The lighting plan was provided as well, and there is some minor trespass off of the property, although it is very minimal based on the photometric plans that are in your document. When the building applies for the building permit, staff will review the lighting to ensure that all of the lighting is downward facing with full cutoff for each of the few fixtures. So why are they here? The first part is 18-9-6, which is the requirement of a certificate of appropriateness, which they have done. The next is for us to review the site plan and look at the landscaping, which they have done. This is a development within a much larger development, and so therefore, there will be buffered on both sides in the future development, so it's kind of in between two. So we look primarily at, on Cook Street, this front landscaping. We asked the applicants about the signage that's identified here. They indicated that they would be coming back in front of the Planning Commission to review the sign when they have that developed, so we did have that as a condition. We look at the architectural and building characteristics, and they did provide site plans, but they also provided a, look at this one, they did provide a variety of renderings to show the various sides, and you can see here the brick and the red that was included. The mechanical equipment is required to be screened, that is usually gonna be approved during the building permitting phase. All loading docks, trash storage facilities are not visible from the entrance corridor. The facade treatment is meant to provide variations to architectural detailing and upgrade the structure. You can see that the only thing that staff made a comment on here is that the updates do meet the design review guidelines. The one deviation is just that we do have a red feature in the structure. Nothing's really identified as allowing that red, but it is muted in appearance, and there are other facilities that have already been constructed, such as the Pals and the Waffle House, which both have colors that have identified their brand identity. So that has been, there is other ones that have been done prior. Finally, we look at the site plan and the layout and the access points. The applicant's provided a site plan that shows sufficient, a sufficient parking lot, and the formatting of the parking stalls, added landscaping, and then continuing to have that limited access point. They originally asked for a full access point across from the current grocery store access point, and we said no. That is matching the underlying site design of the Meadows. So with that, staff has a variety of conditions that they are recommending. If you choose to make a motion to approve, staff would like a final site plan prior to the issuing of approving building permits, a final landscaping plan to identify the plant material, a final lighting plan to show the actual lights that will be provided and installed, a signed certificate of appropriateness so that that comes back before you, and then a signed permit, and finally, all building permits as required would need to be submitted. So with that, I can answer any questions, and the applicants are here to answer questions as well.
I have a question. This shows a brick facade. Will it in fact be red brick?
I will let the applicant state that, but yes.
Jeremy Fields, Appalachian Design, here on behalf of the owner. It will be brick, yes.
It'll be red brick?
Yes.
Yeah. You're welcome to make whatever comments you wanna make about that.
You know, I think staff covered it well. You know, it's in between the Waffle House and the hotel. We are utilizing the existing entrances that are on-site. They remain as they are with the entrance there at the Waffle House, the entrance at the hotel, and there is a right out at the, or right in at the, in front of our lot, that the Waffle Houses are installed. So we're utilizing all those entrances. It's brick, glass, some metal panels, all within the guidelines of the Meadows development. The dumpster is screened, so it's not visible, so...
I have a couple of comments, and I don't know if I'm right about this or not, but in our earlier meeting, in our work session, there was, there was a section about retaining walls, and it says that segmental block is not allowed. Now, we haven't adopted those yet, but is there anything in the current requirements that would...
Not that I know of.
Okay.
I think there's just a height requirement when you need to have an engineer, above a certain height, you have to engineer it, but I don't remember him saying you couldn't have a segmental block.
There's also a black chain link fence on top of the wall, and here again, I'm not an engineer, but if the public doesn't have access to that area above the wall, is the chain link fence required?
The, I can answer that. The wall actually goes down from the driveway.
Oh, it does.
So the fence would be protecting anybody from going on top of the wall. Yeah.
Okay, well, all right. I was just looking at the standard detail.
Yeah, the wall would not be visible from the roadside, 'cause it's on the backside of the building, and it goes down.
Okay.
Myanna, maybe you might be able to answer this, but, so there's, you know, there's 10 parking spaces, but they don't count any of the vacuum spots at all?
Correct.
Okay.
Because normally those would be utilized, so the 10 parking spaces that we're seeing here, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I would assume they would be used by staff primarily.
Yes, correct. Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I was more talking about like the tree calculation, because, because I know there, these aren't parking spaces, but it's kind of like if somebody pulled up the Pizza Hut and went in and got a pizza, they're still parking there, even if, I was just wondering how that counted, but that's fine, if that's the official way, y'all do it.
Other questions or comments?
There's, there's, this doesn't have anything to do with you, but there's already a, I'm a Waffle House groupie, and there's already a difficult entrance to the Waffle House, where people are trying to cross at Pals, which is actually the Waffle House exit. And this sort of complicates that a little bit, I think. It's just an observation. I think it's gonna be people who use the same entrance to go, are not gonna use it to go to the Waffle House, even though they're supposed to.
You are correct, and we discussed that. That was definitely a comment and a request by the town engineer to align with the underlying plat that it says.
Okay. So do we need, I mean, should there be a request for a change, and is that...
No. If they had continued to move forward with the original design, staff was prepared to request that it not be approved. So because they changed it to match the underlying plat, then our town engineer was willing to move this forward and recommend that it be approved.
So you're saying that Waffle House entrance to the left is shared with Pals?
Yes. Well, the entrance into the car wash is actually the entrance to Waffle House.
Right, okay.
And then the exit is supposed to mix in with Pals exit.
With Pals, right. Okay.
But it doesn't work that way. People that are going to the Waffle House pull in through the exit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
How many stacking, what you're stacking?
For the car wash?
Yes.
Each lane, there's three lanes there, can hold about 15 cars, plus you've got the driveway coming in that's running up and down on the page, and there's probably eight cars there, so I mean, it's plenty.
Is the, this is a replica, I'm assuming, of the one that he's built in Kingsport?
That's correct, except this one does have brick.
Yeah, is there any concern relative to the stacking, because in theory, and I don't know that there would be, but hypothetically, you could close off one of the entrances if cars are backed all the way out. Now, that's a lot of cars. That's 15, that's 23. Well, he's had them backed out to Cook Street before on its existing location.
Yeah. The, at Kingsport, he has not had a problem yet, that I know of. I have specifically asked him about that. There is more stack here on this plan than there is at Kingsport.
Okay.
And he can give, Doug, can give you the specifics on the car wash of how many per hour.
The cycle times are good.
I mean, it's quick.
The cycle times are good.
Yeah.
Additional questions or comments? What's the pleasure of the commission? Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the, or grant the COA, subject to submittal of a final lighting plan shall occur prior to the issuance of an approved building permit to the Community Development Department. Submittal of a final landscape plan with identified material prior to the issuance of a building permit, and a final site plan prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Pennington. Any additional discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying ah.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. The next order of business is certificate of appropriateness. Nathan Berg Walberg Construction LLC, 190 East Main Street Avenue, Virginia, representative. Matt Bundy, Bundy A&amp;E, 190 East Main Street Avenue, Virginia, representative. Certificate of appropriateness to build an addition, condition and remodel for the former Carter County Bank Building, former Carter Bank Building, located at 238 West Main Street Avenue, Virginia, 24210, tax map D, parentheses 012-1-127, in parentheses. Staff report.
Sure, Myanna Rice, Community Development Director. So this property is in the central business zoning district B3. Again, it's in the entrance corridor, and so that is why it is coming in front of the Planning Commission for approval. So this is, property is located on approximately 1.45 to acres. Obviously, it was previously a bank. The current owners have indicated that they're wanting to put a multi-tenant shopping area into the space, and it will be focused on specialty retail shops with indoor/outdoor accessibility. The landscaping and lighting, no landscaping plan was provided with this plan. When it comes to redevelopment of sites, it does allow the Planning Commission to request that the parking lot be brought up to the current standards. So in this situation, that would be a need for a dedicated 1,800 square feet of landscaping and 10 trees required based on the proposed parking provided. So staff has indicated that that would be a condition of approval if you wish to recommend approval for this plan. Lighting, again, no lighting plan was provided. I did talk with the applicant, and they did indicate that there would be exterior lighting proposed on the structure, and so again, if you move to make a recommendation for approval tonight, a final lighting plan should be submitted prior to the application for building permits. It is 18-9-6, requires a certificate of appropriateness, as it's in the entrance corridor. They did apply for that. Looking at the additional requirements, they did provide a site plan, and they did indicate, similar to our previous applicants, that they would return to the Planning Commission for approval of future signage. They did not provide any signage with this. When we look at the architecture and general building characteristics, they did provide a site plan that shows a facade that's consistent in materials and colors. Any mechanical equipment would be needing to be screened, and that is approved through the building permit process. The dumpster pad was identified. There's no proposed screening of the future dumpster, but again, that is required as part of the approval through the building permit process. The visual mass of the building is being redeveloped with a variety of building angles and dimensions. The facade plans do appear to meet the design requirements. And so with that, staff has, again, suggested conditions of approval, a final site plan, a final landscaping plan, a final lighting plan, submittal of a signed certificate of appropriateness when they come to install, or when they want to get their signage approved. With that, a signed permit, and finally, any and all building permits need to be submitted to the Community Development Department. So that's what staff is recommending as the conditions for approval. I can answer any questions. The applicant is also here to answer questions.
Any questions?
Thank you all for hearing our application. Just to give you a little background in your consideration...
Matthew, go ahead, you give us your...
Oh, sorry. Matthew Bundy, the applicant, 190 East Main Street Avenue, Virginia, representative of the applicant. And what we're proposing, the, you can see pretty well actually on the site plan, the original box that's there of the existing building, and then we're trying to sort of bring the focus of the entrance a little more to the side where the parking is, and addressing the farmer's market area better, and so we're coming off at a 45 degree angle with this, now the main entrance. And that 45 degree angle, what we did was take cues from the original building, looking back to the old Abingdon Motor Company, where they had, and this was, I think Appalachian Power Company took this down, but originally they had very similar detail work on the main entrance that was addressing Main Street. Rather than completely demolish everything that was on Main Street, we're kind of taking some of the colonial stuff off of the front of it, restoring it to match the style to some degree, and then on this angular entrance, matching the old building how it looked, with tile above the window and the main entrance windows, and then just the storefront with brick with some detailed reveals and a little precast concrete caps to match the front to tie that together. Then as you go down the side, this is the part really is visually interesting from the farmer's market especially, is what they want to create is an arcade there where ideally a lot of those different doors or different shops that are different, a coffee shop, different kind of boutique. type stores or restaurants or whatever. And then the whole front area underneath the archways is just, is a big sort of plaza for eating and gathering or, or hanging out. So we think that could be a great asset to the farmer's market. And of course, stairs going down the back to access the farmer's market, and there'd be accessibility through the front. We're using brick that matches the, the existing front. If you can go to where it shows the, um, the old, uh, I like the renderings, yeah. The front facade of the existing building has brick that's not painted, so we try to match that as best possible. And then the rest is painted brick, but that's being covered. And then there's a lower building that we aren't proposing any changes to now, that if we, they do end up doing work on that, that would be a later application that, um, you can see the block building in the very bottom left, yeah. Sums it up.
Are there questions for Mr. Bundy?
What are you doing with the lower building? You're just fencing it right now?
Right now, we are just, yeah, proposing fencing around it, but, um... Well, I'll speak to that, Nathan Berg, 2433 Walden Road, Abingdon, Virginia. We don't have firm plans for that portion of the building yet. What we would love to see would be some type of a restaurant slash microbrewery. But we don't, again, no, no definitive plans yet for that lower portion.
Quick questions for Mr., additional questions for Mr. Berg or Mr. Bundy? I think this is pretty neat, but the only, the only thing that I want to comment about is if there's individual shops along the arcade, those people are going to want signage out there in the arch. And that needs to be kind of delicately addressed, I think.
Yes, absolutely, and, and we, what we could potentially have is above each arch, you could have a modest sign. We don't want it to be something that would be really ostentatious. We, we do want a lot of the primary traffic to flow into that main entrance, and then you would walk into, it, it's a pretty neat building. Once you kind of strip it down, it has these big, uh, big old beam trusses, and you would, you would walk in, and it would be sort of an open, a- almost like a food hall or a retail indoor market would, would be kind of the concept. And so your primary entrance will still remain on that corner, but, but I agree, there will be signage along that arcade.
Will you be able to access those stores with, that show to the outside there on the arcade? Will you be able to access them from the front as well?
Yeah, you can go in that front angular entrance, and then you're into a big open, where it's gonna be just a big open space in there. The idea of just having booths around and, um... So let's say you had a taco shop, a coffee shop, and, uh, let's say a boutique clothing store there. You'd be able to go into the main entrance, one person would be able to get coffee, the other person would get their taco, and then you would sit in the main common dining area either inside or outside. So they, they wouldn't, again, it's kind of this, this food hall model that has been successful in places like Asheville and, and other places. But I think it would be a great, um, great addition to kind of that, that town square feeling with the farmer's market.
Additional questions or discussion?
How many spaces, I mean, so you're talking about each of those being spaces? Cause there's six overall, or right now, we're kind of...
It's not, it's not nine.
Defined yet in terms of that.
So the maximum number would be six, but I, I see it being more likely that maybe you have a few smaller shops in the indoor market, and then maybe, you know, one, one store would occupy maybe two of those arches, or even three. It just depends on what vendors end up establishing.
Other questions or comments? Is there a motion from the commission? Well, I don't want to be... I would move that we approve the certificate appropriateness as presented with staff recommendations, so, which is what she said. So you, you would adopt, you would move to adopt the certificate appropriateness, and you would adopt the, the recommendations of staff?
Correct.
Is that su- suitable?
Okay.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll say.
Okay, Mr. Sprouls? Any additional discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it's approved. Okay, the next item of business, actually, there are two under J. The first is the planning commission initiated proposed text amendment number one under section eight dash two dash thirteen, add the word hotels. Staff report.
Yes, so similar to how, um, the first, um, the request came in from the United Way. As we all know, the planning commission, if they wish to initiate a zone text amendment, it has to start here. So the first request, there's two of them. The first request is to add the word hotels to the old and historic sub-district thirteen. As you can see in the application, which I put in here, and the applicant is here to speak to this as well. It says, "In an effort to bring new life and vitality to the center of town, we propose the following zoning text amendment, which would allow hotels in the old historic, dis- sub-district thirteen." This area has historically been home to hotels such as Hotel Abingdon and the Beaumont Hotel. And so they are looking to redevelop the, uh, Abingdon Hotel, and so therefore are looking to ensure that the word hotel exists under section eight dash two dash one three. So if you look at that section, eight dash two dash one three, the types of uses you see are restaurants, specialty retail shop, museums, professional studios, lofts in existing buildings or portions of existing buildings. The sub-district, the special uses that one could ask for are museums, distributor, or microbrewery. So tonight, your role as the planning commission is to determine if you would be willing to initiate the zone text amendment.
Now, is, is the building they're talking about, is that the old Mercantile building?
Correct.
Okay. Does everybody know where, where that is? I'll be sure. Is there anybody else to speak to that? Pro or con? Any other questions for Ms. Rice?
Where is this text again?
So they are, they are just simply, they're just looking to add the word hotels into eight dash two dash one three.
Of the OH ordinance?
Of the OH ordinance, yes.
Has that gone through HPRB, or is that within our?
It all, it comes to you all.
Okay, any insight from the HPRB?
No, it doesn't actually go to them, but they did recommend approval of the, um, Abingdon Hotel, the old Mercantile building. They did recommend approval of the request from the applicant, so maybe you would like to speak to that matter?
I think it would be help, helpful to outline the size of sub-district thirteen. It's one of the smallest sub-districts of the, of the, um, old historic, um, district. And, and basically, if you look at that map, you have the, the post office, the old hotel, which is what we're remodeling, and the, the old depot and the old train station. And that's, that's almost the extent of it. So, um, by approving hotels into this language, you're, you're not, it's not very expansive. You know, you're pretty limited. There's really basically nowhere else you could possibly build a hotel, uh, short of tearing down the post office. And so by allowing this wording, it, it allows us to kind of take that part of Abingdon and bring it back to the old, the way it, it used to be, you know, a hundred years ago. I think Abingdon, especially the, the old and historic district, um, holds a lot of appeal for tourists and visitors, and there's not a lot of great opportunities for people to, to stay in the old and historic district. And this, I, I feel like is a perfect fit for a, a, an old-fashioned boutique hotel. And I think it would, you know, it would fit very nicely in with the comprehensive plan. And also, um, I, I don't really see a potential downside, you know, in, in lots of conversations with Myana. There's not a lot of, of downsides necessarily to allowing this type of use in this sub-district. So it would not encompass the, the entire old and, and historic overlay. It would just be this one fairly limited area.
So this is sub-district thirteen.
What would happen with that sub-district? Should we adopt the suggested changes to the zoning ordinance? Would that be expanded? If so, how much?
This is actually still going to remain one of the, I think they call it, um, like the creative district or something at this point. So it's not going to merge. Honestly, the merging of the districts will come more along Valley Street being one area, and then the primary Main Street being a second area. This area is still going to be maintaining as it is. I think it would be combined with fourteen. There's really only, you know, approximately five parcels in that sub-district, so it is fairly limited.
Questions for Mr. Berg? Comments?
The other, I mean, the option, there is always the option to have hotels as a special use permit, um, as well. I don't know, I did not discuss that with the applicant, but you can make that as, as, as a choice as well, and have it then go through additional review, um, as a special use permit and not allowed as a, a use by right. So there is that option.
Would, assuming that we approve this change, would the plan for the hotel have to go through either the planning commission or the preservation board?
If you did decide to put it as a special use permit, yes, it would have to go through.
But it wouldn't if we didn't?
Correct, if you just do it as a permitted use, then they would move forward without an additional public hearing.
And, and our proposed improvements to the building have already been approved by the HPRB?
I just, I'm very protective of the HPRB. I understand that it's the planning commission, we have to examine what is before us. But making a, was a change or the special use actually specified to the HPRB?
It was not, no.
Okay, I would like to see that discussed. And it just, if, if the HPRB doesn't have a problem with inserting that language to where it's a use by right, then, um, that's fine. I'm of the opinion, anything in the OH district, they have exclusive jurisdiction over it. So if it comes before us, then it needs to be special use.
Would it, um, it, it's, it is appropriate if the commission decides that it should be a special use, that we could deal with that here, make it a special use?
Yes, sir.
I mean, that is an option, if, if that's the pleasure of the commission.
In that it's in the OH district, um, I just think it lies within their purview. And I would, you know, as far as inserting language, um, that grants it a use by right, I think it ought to be a special use within them, for them. And I certainly don't mean to delay anything.
And I, and honestly, this one, uh, because this, this is more to dealing with the, um, the end use of the building. And if I'm not mistaken, we can proceed, uh, with, with the, the renovation and proceed with getting our building permit, because we could just as easily do it as a loft apartment.
Correct, so with this project specifically, the reason they went to the HPRB with the design was that they can come in as lofts in an existing building or portion of existing building, which is what they're proposing with commercial on the bottom floor. So it does, the use already, based on what has been reviewed, is allowed. It's just if, if the applicant wants to take it and make it into a hotel versus apartments, then, um, they would need to have that use allowed.
Right, it would just open up one more possibility.
Well, and I, and I certainly understand that and appreciate and like everything that you're doing. That's a beautiful old building.
Yeah.
You know, but again, um, just from my experience on the HPRB, um, I would defer to them.
And I think, given the, the fact that that sub-district is so small, and the other opportunities for building another, or renovating a building into a hotel are...
I think it's a very...
Are basically...
No, I mean, I...
But I, I agree with you, I think having their input would be, uh, make a lot of sense.
Question I have is, in terms of, of procedure, um, the, the HPRB can't initiate a text amendment. So that has, we have to deal with that one way or the other. It's going to be constructed, either it has to be a by right, or it has to be a special use. But we can't basically not do anything.
No, and what I'm saying is, I just think it needs to be a special use.
And, and that would be an appropriate motion if that's what you want to do.
What I, yes, sir. To insert the language, uh, hotels by special use permit.
Okay, is there additional discussion, second?
I'll second that.
Okay, additional discussion, and that, that doesn't?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Any additional discussion? If not, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now, there, there's a second part of that, which is similar, but it's, it's, uh, under section ten dash one, add the word hotels. So I, I don't want to jump in, but I'm assuming we would do that by special use as well. Now, where is, where is that located?
Yeah, let's go ahead and take a little, a little different look at that.
Okay.
So this is another request. So I will take, so you initiated the, uh, special use permit for the previous one. I will take that to the HPRB meeting. I will say, the planning commission has initiated that. We're asking for a recommendation or, um, you know, discussion on that and bring that back prior to you actually making a motion. So we'll handle that, that one way. This one is in the B1. So your B1 zoning district is this purplish-blue color. Let's see, maybe you can point it out a little bit easier to, here we go. So it's this district here. Again, a relatively small area of the zoning, um, map. And this is asking for the word hotels to be added in the B1. Again, looking at the permitted uses by right, there's quite a few of them. We do have everything from neighborhood grocery stores to gift shops, um, distributor, microbrewery, and one of the uses where, um, short-term rentals are actually allowed, even though many people think that short-term rentals are allowed anywhere. B1 is one of the districts where you can come in and request a short-term rental as a special use. So with that, um, I would say you would probably want to have a similar type of discussion. I will say that along this, and maybe the applicant can, I think there's a few, um, microhotels almost, or guesthouse types of facilities that are in that area, so.
Yes, so, uh, the, the thinking behind this request, and this is not as tied to a specific project... So the, the thinking behind this request, and this is not as tied to a specific project as the previous request. This is more in an effort to, to add the use of hotel to a, a district that already is, that I feel would accommodate that type of use very well. Again, in keeping with the comprehensive plan, you know, it states that the town will have a wide variety of options such as lodging, restaurants, experiences, retail tours, and culinary events to meet the needs of visitors of all ages and interests. It also states that Avenue will invest in activities, amenities, and experiences to meet the changing need for repeat and new travelers. On page seven of the comp plan, it says Avenue will achieve well-planned orderly growth by building on our assets, increasing walkability, and maintaining an exceptionally high quality life. There's a huge demand for either, whether it be Airbnbs or hotels for Abingdon. And that demand right now is not being met, especially for hotels and boutique hotels closer into town within walking distance of restaurants. Because we do not have Uber in Abingdon. So if you're a visitor coming into Abingdon and you have two glasses of wine, it becomes difficult for you to get back to your hotel if you're not within walking distance. So this is a, a desire to create a zoning that would accommodate that demand and also make Avenue a more attractive place for tourism and visitors.
Yeah, I think a good portion of that B1 district though is in the floodplain, isn't it?
Parts of it are, yes. There are also height requirements. So there are certain things that would restrict the amount of development that could happen, but, but those things would not completely preclude that type of development.
And all that would, if, if there was a plan, that the, the site plan and the, the building permit would have to address all those issues, isn't that correct?
That's correct.
I suspect that with the development of the casino and more people around, that this demand is going to increase rather than go the other way.
Yes. And Avenue is poised well to benefit from that additional tourism if we're smart about it and if we, if we meet that, that demand. And I think this is a good opportunity to, to move in that direction.
That's the only B1 district?
Correct.
One thing I might mention in terms of these developments, whether it's the old mercantile business or this one, is that the Economic Development Authority, working with the county, now has gotten the ability to use almost the entire downtown as an enterprise zone. So things like this and the redevelopment of the mercantile building are also becoming more attractive to people making these investments than they were previously. And I can say, knowing Nate's work on the EDA and as well as being a member, is that something that we have worked on for years?
Yes.
And I think it will make this type of thing more attractive to investors. And I frankly don't think that the mercantile building would be redeveloped like this without that. At least that was not expected.
The math doesn't work. The, the only way you can really make money on doing a truly, you know, top of the line renovation is to do it as some type of short-term rental or boutique hotel. They're just, I can guarantee you that, that, that those dollars would not be flowing into that building were not for the possibility of doing it as a hotel.
Now, again, I think if, if we wanted to do that as a special use, that would be appropriate here as well as the others. Additional questions for Mr. Berg? Additional comments? If not, what's the pleasure of the commission?
Make a motion to prove it as a special use permit, consistent with what we have done for.
I don't know how to address you. Can I ask a question regarding this? I, I will send a letter because I own land of this district. So I'm just trying to figure out what part it encompasses, like where, like down Park Street, Court Street?
It's the next, it's the next one that you, you received a letter because there's a specific project that's coming here. But yes, so what, and I'll just explain it. What they're looking at doing is having the code allow for hotels that go through a public hearing process.
Okay.
So if a hotel was to be proposed in this area, which is basically yes, if you can see the kind of purplish area here, blue-purple in the middle, if a hotel was going to be proposed, the same types of letters would go out and it would be advertised in the newspaper and have a full public hearing, like the one you're going to listen to here in a second.
Oh, okay. So, sorry, I can't tell.
No, I know, I know.
And it's confusing. It's all, it's all cut up.
It is. There's a lot going on tonight, so.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to allow hotels in that district as a special use. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, second. Any additional discussions, questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. And I suspect you're here for that.
I think I'm here for the rest of the evening.
Okay, the next order of business is a public hearing, a zoning map ordinance amendment and special use permit. Public hearing, zoning map amendment, the Clink LLC, 190 East Main Street, Avenue, Virginia, 24210. Zoning text amendment to change M1 zoning to B1, located at 214 Park Street, Avenue, Virginia, 24210. Tax map D, parentheses, zero one three dash one dash one thirty-three, in parentheses. So I'm going to open the public hearing and staff report.
Okay. And I'll try to be super clear because I know it's kind of tough to hear all these different types of words and things. The request is for, if you can see here on the map, it's, we're looking at this parcel that's in an aqua color. The request is to take that from an M1, which is considered limited industrial district, to a limited business, which would be B1. So this parcel here would match the surrounding uses that are all here that are in the purplish color. So the history of this is that the site was originally the home of the Washington County Jail. There's also currently, so Washington County Jail is the 216. On the corner, there's currently a, the Holston Mountain Artisan Shop. And so with the closing of the jail, the current owners are looking to redevelop this project. So their application indicates renovate two-story brick building and add a third floor. The footprint of the building will remain unchanged. So they're looking to redevelop this existing structure. And again, they are looking to do a boutique hotel, short-term rental.
Well, we'll, actually, this would be multifamily.
Multifamily.
With potentially a few units as short-term.
Okay. Mostly multifamily with a few units as short-term rental. So right now, as you can see, the uses that are allowed in M1 do not allow for residential. And it honestly probably makes sense because it was a jail. And so that probably, a lot of places will have like a institutional zoning district or this has an industrial one. So it's a little bit odd, but it makes sense for why that use is there in that district. So in order for it to go to B1, this request would allow for ten dash one dash two, which is multifamily dwellings in an existing building or portions of an existing building. So they could allow for multifamily to be redeveloped on this parcel. One of the special uses that is allowed in that district is short-term rentals. And then if there was, if the other zoning occurs, then there could be flexibility in that as well. So with that, staff looks at the Virginia Code fifteen dot two dash two two eight four. That states a long list of items that are reasonably considered for, you have to look at the existing use and character of the property, which is an existing structure that is currently not being used. You have to look at the comprehensive plan. You have to, have to look at the suitability of the property for various uses. So kind of how we talked in our workshop earlier, you'd have to allow all the other possible items that are in B1 to be allowed on this property. You look at trends and growth. You look at the current and future requirements of the community. You look at the transportation requirements of the community. You look at the requirements for hotels, housing, schools, parks, playgrounds, recreation areas, and other public services. And you look at the conservation of natural resources, the preservation of floodplains, and the encouragement of the most appropriate use of the land through the locality. So the current character of area has been developed really in eclectic mix of businesses and retail, as we all know, from, you know, Park Street all the way through to this. And even this has mixed use. The location of this to the terminus of the Creeper Trail does make sense that it is not limited industrial anymore and moves more into something that is limited commercial. And there were several references that were indicated for the comprehensive plan and the, the items that we'll pull out of here is the town standard for preservation will maintain the look and feel of its historic district while allowing for economically viable reuse of structures. So in this case, in order to reuse the structure, it needs to change from a limited industrial to limited commercial. Avenue will have a thriving tourism economy built on arts, history, and outdoor recreation. The town will have a variety of options such as lodging, restaurants, experiences, retail tours, and culinary events. Avenue will invest in activities, amenities, and experiences to meet the changing needs for repeat and new travelers. And Avenue will grow its economy to help a wide range of local and regional entrepreneurs and business prosper. So this property, as you guys had indicated earlier when we were talking about where the floodplain is, it is partially within the floodplain, but there's additional regulations and an additional public hearing that we're about to go into regarding redevelopment in the floodplain. So the appropriate use of this land within the downtown portion of the town of Abingdon is not limited industrial per staff's recommendation. It is limited business, is more appropriate. And one other item that we should always mention is the requirement that you choose a zoning that directly abuts your project. So you don't look at zonings that are different than your project because that's considered spot zoning and it's not allowed. So a person could not come in here and do an R4 zoning district on this parcel of land. So they're choosing one that does abut their project. I did ask whether or not this parcel had, if the owner had been contacted. At the last conversation I had, they had not been contacted.
It's owned by the county.
Yeah.
And it was just, I, in hindsight, I should have gotten them to submit an application with this one as well, but it just didn't happen.
Are there questions for Ms. Rice or Mr. Berg? Ma'am, did, does?
So the, the blue, like the Park Street with that blue, does that mean residential? Or so, is that like Arland or something? I'm assuming the colors represent the zoning?
They do. So all of this sort of bluish purple is limited business, actually.
And that's as it currently is?
B1, as it currently is. This little aqua section that Mr. Berg is asking to also be limited commercial is currently limited industrial, which is kind of a, I, I assume it was there as a holding pattern for the jail at one point. But yes, so this, all of this area is actually limited business. So residential is allowed, but it is all business currently.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
I mean, you, you're welcome to make any comment you wish to make.
Well, I was just curious because I love Park Street, it's all houses mostly. So for it to be B1, that's just interesting. I mean, I know some things I've been compared, but my other issue too would be like the allowance for the floodplain. That would be an advantage for me because I own the lot of Black Ford. And so I was told from my option that I wasn't allowed to put anything there.
If, if you don't mind, would you come forward and, and identify yourself and so forth? And then go ahead and make your comments because we want to make sure, we want to make sure we get them in the minutes.
Okay. My name is Debbie Evans, 17378 Mahogany Lane, Abingdon. But like I said, I do own a lot on Black Ford and I had approached years ago to put a house on it and I was told I wasn't allowed to because of the floodplain.
Yeah, I think you got floodway through there, so I don't think you can.
It's the AE flood.
Right.
So one of the additional, this is the AE floodway. So one of the additional requests tonight from the applicant is to redevelop this building, but it already exists. So the problem here with adding a new one is that you can't add a new structure in the actual floodway. So that is probably the difference in, it's a very slight nuance in what we're talking about tonight. But you could always come in and chat and we could see what options exist.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Any additional questions for Ms. Rice or Mr. Berg? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing. And any additional discussion from members of the commission?
Adding a floor, you had mentioned maybe adding a third floor to an existing building. What does that, what?
Yeah, we'll get into that in, in the next.
Okay.
I know he's got so many tonight, but yes.
I'm sorry, guys.
All right. Is there a, a motion for the commission?
And the county owns the other?
They own the other.
I mean, is that?
We could approach them.
I, I would, I don't.
Doesn't make any sense to address one with the, leaving.
The county owns 226.
Correct.
Okay. And Clink owns 214, 216, and 220?
Correct.
Okay. And let me rephrase, or from first memory, as to what is actually being requested, is just a change in zoning from M1 to B1.
It appears to me that that actually is a more appropriate zone than what we have now.
Yeah, I think it's just because the jail made it commercial.
Yep.
I think the jail owned that property, they've done that since the eighteen hundreds, before zoning, and then they probably just, everything got zoned in around it.
I make a motion that we grant the zoning change from M1 to B1 to coincide with adjacent properties.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Wilson. Any additional discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. The next public hearing, special use permit, the Clink LLC, 190 East Main Street, Avenue, Virginia, 24210. Zoning text amendment to change M1 zoning to B1, located at 214 Park Street Avenue, Virginia, 24210. Tax map D, zero, parentheses, zero one three dash one dash one thirty-three, in parentheses. And I'll open the public hearing and ask for discussion.
So another item on the same parcel, so we've gone through a lot of these tonight, but the Clink LLC, and Nathan Berg is a representative, are asking this time for a special use permit due to substantial improvement in the AE flood hazard district. So this is the one that we're specifically talking about, their building. It's currently zoned M1. We just had a motion, which is why we put it ahead of this one, that you all are recommending that it be rezoned to B1. So it contains approximately 1.0. So, it contains approximately 1.012 acres. It's got multiple structures. I'm not going to go too much further into what I already talked about. But again, they're renovating a two-story brick building, adding a third floor. The footprint is going to remain unchanged. And so that's really what allows them any flexibility in doing the work that they're doing. So fifteen dash nine is where the ability to utilize the flood hazard district exists. If, it says, "All uses, activities, and development occurring within any flood hazard district shall be undertaken only upon the issuance of a special use permit." So that's what you have come tonight to review and make a determination. As planners are not engineers, we had the town engineer review this and he provided his analysis, which we provided to you as an attachment, and made the determination that this does require a special use permit in order to redevelop the structure. When we look at the site plan requirements, the applicants did provide a site plan and a permit with the base flood elevation on that site plan. The elevation of the lowest floor was included and the other topographic information as required. The next item that we look at are, is fifteen dash nine dash four. And this is where we're talking about the third floor. The application states the addition of a third floor and interior remodel will not alter the exterior of the project or necessitate fill or encroachment. So, we wouldn't be here discussing it the same way if they were looking to do anything outside of this building. Fifteen dash eleven says, identifies this as an existing structure in the floodplain. And I'm going to read fifteen dash eleven dash one C for the record. "The modification, alteration, repair, reconstruction, or improvement of any kind to a structure and/or use regardless of its location in a floodplain district to an extent or amount of fifty percent or more of its market value shall be undertaken only in full compliance with this article and shall require the entire structure conform to the Virginia USBC." So, per the memo from the town engineer, the flood report indicates that no addition or new construction is proposed outside of the existing building footprint and therefore will not result in an increase in the base flood elevation. He indicated in his opinion that the criteria set out within the town code has been performed using good engineering principles and methods and satisfies those requirements. He recommends approval of a special use permit signed and dated on January twenty eighth, 2022, solely on the basis of the utilization of the flood hazard district. If there were any future development on the site or encroachments, additional analysis would be required. And so this development should be undertaken only in strict compliance with the provisions of the code and ordinance. So again, this, what we're looking at is a special use permit specifically for the redevelopment. The conditions that staff has indicated are similar to the ones that we would require for anything. A final site plan with landscaping, a final site plan with lighting, submittal of a signed permit, and then submittal of all building permits as required by this code in compliance with the VAUSBC for both construction permitting and for any required flood proofing. So with that, the applicant is here to discuss his project with you.
I think you pretty much covered it all. As Myana said, you know, we're renovating the old jail. Not really doing anything in terms of additions to the exterior. And so, there's no change in, in the flood elevation.
Any questions for Mr. Berg?
My only question is height, is there a?
Thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five.
Within B1. And will be right at thirty-five feet.
I was worried about the scale of, like, make that house look like.
It'll be, it will be lower than the existing three-story old, old jail. So you've got the old Victorian jail and then the old, the, you know, turn this in, I mean mid-century jail, which is what we're renovating. It'll, it will be lower than the, than the old brick building where Holston Mountain Artisans currently is.
Other questions for Mr. Berg or Ms. Rice? Is there anybody else here to speak to the public here, either for or against this particular application? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any additional discussion from any of the commissioners? If not, is there a motion from the commission? I'll just read this sample motion for approval. I appreciate you preparing this. It reads, "Having reviewed and considered the application materials, staff report, and public comment in accordance with the requirements of section nineteen dash nine dash six of the Town of Avenue zoning ordinance, I move to approve the Clink special use permit with approval subject to all applicable laws and regulations, staff findings, and staff recommended conditions." Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Any additional discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Great, thank you, thank you. I know this went a little bit late, so I do appreciate all of you taking the time to listen to this.
It has been a fairly lengthy day. We might, we might double what we get paid for this piece of work. In any case, the work session, we concluded. Any other old business or matters are not on the agenda. One thing, just before we adjourn, Myana, you'll just let us know kind of if we, if we're going to convene at three o'clock on the twenty-eighth or not. And we'll go from there as we discussed earlier. Is there a motion that we adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I assume there are none opposed. I think about that old jail when I was dating my wife, her father.